We need, we need five per one.
Actually.
And then I also.
We've also got another high school for the weekend, so.
Cause we lost some high school interns because they all went to college. So they have a junior.
One more.
Yeah. Nothing good, now we're good.
Thank you.
It should, it's the best thing about this thing.
You can just go away and all of them.
All right. Excuse me. Um, we have one, we started.
Wonderful.
Now we're recording.
Hello, welcome like to, welcome everyone to the August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two Travel Council Advisory Board Meeting.
Special.
Special, yeah, special meeting. Um, can I have a call to?
You call it over.
I call it over, yeah. I did say that.
Yeah.
Um, thanks Rachel. Um, next is competent interest disclosures. Expertise.
You should probably say who's attending, so it's part of the minute, say in attendance. Are. And then, uh, say who's all here.
Let's just do introductions.
First, let's just do introductions. That sucks.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. Yeah, Jenny, you're doing great.
Alright, my name's Vinnie Gleason, I am the Travel Council Advisor Chair. Um, for the advisory board.
Hi, I'm Alex Boroshevsky and I am a member of the Travel Council Advisory Board.
Sharon Kinsley, Advisory Board.
I'm August Grant, the Grand County Economic Development Director. Mary, do you want to go next?
Lori McGann, Grand County Commission Liaison.
Jason.
Jason Taylor, um, Grand County Travel Council Member.
Uh, Rachel. Rachel's microphone doesn't work, but she is the Administrative Assistant for our office. And I'll do Melissa too, Melissa's our Assistant Marketing Director, um, for, for our office as well. Jacob.
We only have four. We have seven voting members, so four is important.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead Jacob.
Sure, thank you. Uh, da da na sta da, sisa Jacob Crane. Uh, hello everyone, my name's Jacob Crane, I'm from Sutono Nation, uh, which is located on the south west side of Calgary, Alberta. But I've been a community member in the Greater Salt Lake area for twenty years. And I've been living on the Navajo Nation, well, the Utah Navajo Nation for the past two years. So really happy to, to, to be in this space and meeting with you folks.
Awesome. Thanks for, thanks for coming, Jason, or Jacob, sorry. We're, we're, uh, we're doing all kinds of stuff, we got flood damage all over the place and our brains are in three places at once, so. Apologies if we're a little scattered today.
Um, so there's no citizens to be heard. Besides Jacob's here, and then any presentations?
You're doing great. Uh, yeah, so just while I'm here, I'm gonna hop off here in just a second to get to another call, but, um. While this board is here, uh, the four o'clock special, um, uh, emergency county meeting for the relief funds, um, for local businesses. That's kind of my priority today. Um, I just wanted to speak briefly to you guys, if any questions or, or Jason or anybody else has any questions on that while I'm here, Alex or. Basically, it's gonna be two hundred and fifty grand, uh, one from promotion of TRT. Uh. And, uh, diversification TRT, and if you're towards a business, it'll come out of the promotion bucket. If you're not towards the business, it'll come out of the diversification bucket. Um, it's a, it's a, we put this together very quickly, but have worked closely with the Chamber, UTIA, um, Commission, the city, et cetera, to make sure that it is a pretty good program, so, um, we'll be talking through it, uh, at four o'clock, top to bottom. Um, if there are any like super quick questions on that, I can address it. If not, I'll let this, this meeting go on and we can get super stoked on the, uh, Red Canyon Powaw, learn more about it and discuss the potential to advise planning to.
So, so August is two hundred and fifty thousand?
That's the, that's the, that's the up to, um, yeah, that's the max right now that we're asking the commission to, um, authorize.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Just offer, uh, it's probably, it's fairly narrow, it's, it's very much trying to prioritize businesses with the highest, um, urgency in terms of things that can get them from closed to open, uh, or from a position of financial precarity to a position of we will be okay. Uh, and those that have to lease them out of pre-existing resources, whether flood insurance, lines of credit, et cetera. Okay. Yeah, so that's, that's the intention.
No, then just for this.
Just a business program, right? Yep. And that's not necessarily the final thing, the only program that Kenny will do, but it's what we're starting right now.
And just to clarify, this is not cutting into any advertising money?
No, this is, this is previously unallocated reserves, uh, of which we, we have a prerogative to spend this year with ri- with, with risk of reaching statutory maximums. Uh, and so, and, and I think the most important context is that we are on top of this, um, planning to do a half million dollar drag market campaign this fall. It's also coming out of reserves, the pre-existing three hundred million of tragic dollars. Three hundred thousand dollar, uh, fly market campaign has already been contracted for it to go. And then we did get, I don't know if it's been announced officially, we're awarded two hundred and twenty-five K from the state with the co-op grant program. That'll go towards a little under a half million dollar total fly market campaign for, uh, December twenty-two through June, you know, June twenty-three. Say it one more time.
Like for the Canadian?
No, this is for getting people to fly into Moab, so, so that's more targeting markets that are one stop away from Denver, Salt Lake.
Okay.
LA, Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, Chicago, Salt Lake, Denver. So it's a total marketing spend that has not started yet, starting ASAP of one point two five hundred dollars. So two concerns that this could potentially diminish our ability to effectively market the region in the next year. I, I did just as well.
Right.
But real concerns, and I appreciate that. Any other questions on that?
Thank you, see you at four.
See you at four, okay. Yeah, Jacob, I will take no more of your time, thank you for making the time to, uh, come out today. Uh, I volunteered at your event last year and thought it was wonderful and, uh, excited that you're coming back. New name, new you. Alright, I'll let everybody after it. Thank you, call me back, Peter, thank you.
Great, yes. Hey Jacob, sorry, I didn't get a, you guys was out of town a couple of weeks, but, um, just kind of go into, um, do you want to go under just kind of describing certain things, or I mean, everyone has the application? Do you want to just kind of briefly go over it?
Sure.
Yeah, same teller concern.
Or, or, yeah, we can kind of just.
Clarification.
Yeah, or else we can skip it, how does everyone feel like you need more explanation, or else just kind of Sharon's gonna, um, ask some questions?
Yeah, one of the things, we just need clarification on what your actual expenses are. It seems a little lopsided that. I'm the one that brought up the concern, actually, just to be honest, um, that you're asking for eighteen thousand three hundred, but you're expecting to make forty-one thousand, so I'm, I'm not quite sure why we should completely fund it. We're not, I mean, we're not in the business to completely fund a, an event when you're planning on making a whole bunch of profit. I mean, we all, we definitely, I mean, we, I love this, um, this event, I really want, I'm just concerned that if we start being completely funding events, people are gonna think we're gonna just, you know, if someone wants to have an event, we will fund it all and they can have all the profit. So I, I'm not sure, and maybe you got some numbers wrong, um, and it's just not clear. So if you can maybe talk to that?
Absolutely, um, absolutely. Uh, those are guestimates, um, if, that's, 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 that's saying that we're having a great day. That there's everybody coming in, that we're hitting our numbers, um, that's not actual hard. I mean, again, I'm basing this off of last year, um, I don't know if it's gonna be raining that day, I don't know, you know, it could be affected by people not coming to the event, um, maybe there's, you know, it could be affected by a million things. So it's not actually, um, those are not hard numbers, it's more of like guidelines of what we're projected to make. Um, I don't actually think that, you know, I mean, that would be great if we could make forty thousand plus, but again, I don't really think that's gonna happen. I think, um, that's just, you know, we're, we're moving off of last year's numbers. And I'm kind of increasing those numbers to be a little bit more, because I think the Powaw is gonna be a hit, to be honest. Um, I, I definitely, uh, understand your concern of like, yeah, we don't want to fund every event and whatnot. But I will, I will say that, um, I'm not too sure how many indigenous events happen in Moab, um, given the, the, the township and whatnot, I'm not too sure. But I definitely think that this is something that the council should support and, you know, I know that it was a large ask, um, just because of, you know, the nature of the Powaw and whatnot, but, you know, I, I definitely think that it's, you know, something that, you know, good for the community. And again, I don't know if we're actually gonna make that, I think, uh, what, what we did last year, um, a lot of the door, the door sales and, um, the taco stand sales and the vendor sales actually went towards, um, funding the prize money payout, which is the, kind of like the nature of the event, so there are, there are people that come in and, you know, do the dance, you know, there are pay to actually be there as presenters, but there's also another side of it where we actually pay out money as well. And so although it may say, yeah, we're gonna make forty thousand, actually, a lot of that money goes out into the community as well. So and I'm glad to clarify any other questions that that might have brought up as well. Go ahead, uh, Mary?
The recording has stopped.
Uh, it says the recording has stopped on my end, has it stopped? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mary, but I think we lost some folks in.
I, I can hear you, Mary, as well.
Our, did we lose the people from the, in the meeting?
It looks like it, to me.
Okay, well, I can, hi, hello Jacob.
Hi.
I am very excited about this Powaw, I went last year and I really like it, but I do echo the concern. Uh, what I'm thinking of, uh, I'd like to know how much money is paid out in prize money, and I, I recognize, I've been to quite a few Powaws in my years, so I, I understand that, and I'm wondering if, uh, if there could be a benchmark or, uh, uh, level set that if you get this much revenue. I, did, uh, so we got everybody else back, I'll repeat what I said. I said, said I really appreciate, I really support this event, and I'm excited and I understand that, uh, some of the money will go to prize money. I'd like to know approximately what that is, is in the budget. And I'm wondering if we helped start this and fund it, if there can be a bench line or a, a plateau where once you start making over, the revenues are over a certain amount, then you start paying, helping pay back the county. So next year, we, we can do the jumpstart or whatever, but I, I do think at a certain point, uh, taxpayers' money should, uh, you know, we should, we should reinvest it, am I making sense? That if, uh, we hit a certain level of revenue, then from that on, you start paying, uh, the loan back or the, what you have received, your grant. Is that something we could consider? Did you lose me? Hello?
Yeah, um, yeah, no, I, I definitely think we definitely could, I'm just gonna drop this in the chat really quick, the, um, the, uh, the budget that we had last year, or maybe I might just share it with you folks, actually, let's just, you know what, I can, uh, screen share, can I, can I just screen share? Is that okay if somebody can make me the co-host and we can actually talk about numbers and, and whatnot, how about, how does that sound, is that okay?
What's that? Is this one designed? Sure. I'm just working on it right now.
Sure.
I think.
Rachel, I don't know how to do that, I don't know how to.
Oh.
Do you wanna?
Do you know how to do it, Jacob?
Do you know how to do it, so you can share your screen?
If you click on, uh, my, I, if you look at my, my, my little square box that I'm in, and there's a mute button, and there's also with three dots, if you click on the three dots, it should say make host.
Okay, so, um.
Click on the three dots, not just, click on one, click on one. Oh, it's not saying that.
It just says chat.
Chat and pin.
Who's the host? Oh, you just copy that?
Uh, maybe, I don't know. Sorry.
That's okay, technical difficulties on a Tuesday afternoon, it's, it's fine.
Um, do you want to try to create the chat right now, I can try?
Yeah, let's try doing it this way, let's try doing it this way.
Yeah.
What they can do is just close the Zoom and I can create another link.
That's, there's too many people, I think.
Yeah.
He's trying to join too, and having trouble. Who was, Lacy? Oh, Lacy's trying to join?
Yeah. I mean, no one's to send it, so, um.
I thought it was on his computer. Oh, that's just.
Alright, I'm gonna drop it in the, uh, chat and then folks can kind of take a look at, I just had to create a different, um.
Oh, God.
Yeah, so it's in the chat. Um, it kind of talks a little bit about what we actually paid out last year, which was twenty-seven thousand dollars, and I think twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars is what we actually paid out last year. Um, so we only raised probably about twenty-one to twenty-two thousand in donations for the Powaw. But we were, we were actually lopsided when we started the event, so we had to, um, compensate through the door sales and, um, and all that other fun stuff that happened, so we actually didn't make anything last year off of this Powaw. Um, it was a little, I mean, I think we made like maybe two thousand dollars, but, um, it wasn't a large, uh, moneymaker. I think we're projected to make a little bit of money this year, but I, I don't think it will be forty thousand dollars, um, if. Can folks hear me, or?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, sorry, um, but yeah, I don't, I don't, um, if it was a really good day, then yeah, like, we would make forty thousand dollars and I would be happy to pay back some of this, this money to the county, um, but, uh, I just don't see that happening, if that makes sense. But again, if it was a really good day and we hit, you know, all of our ducks were lined up in a row, absolutely, that would be wonderful.
So if your expenses last year were twenty-seven thousand dollars, wouldn't your, wouldn't your expenses be close to that this year, because, I mean, that would make me feel better, that we're not totally funding. It's just on the paper, it says we're totally funding, um.
I, I think there might be some miscommunications or disconnect happening. So what I put into the budget was you folks would pay for the presenters, which is the host rum and like all that stuff, right, and so that it really lines up, right? So you guys are actually not paying for the prize money payout of the Powaw, that would not be you folks. And I think that's where the disconnect is happening. I think that's where it is. Actually, I'm pretty sure that's where the disconnect is happening. And so again, that might be my fault, um, for not putting that information there, but I thought it was more of like, what is, the grant is actually gonna be used for, which is the actual, you know, what, what was listed in the actual, uh, line items. But no, um, you wouldn't be paying for the prize money payout, so you're actually just paying for one, one part of the actual event.
So is, is the requested amount eighteen thousand three hundred, or is it the other box, which is?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand four hundred, which looks like what you're trying to describe.
The requested amount is eighteen thousand three hundred dollars, but the eighteen thousand three hundred dollars does not cover the entire event.
See, that, that's what makes me feel better, that's.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. No, I was like, wait a minute, hold on a second here, we didn't make anything last year. Um, no, and, and if it, we did make a little bit, but even with the projected amount, like, if you take the, the, the amount that was shared with you, the twenty-seven thousand, that's not including, uh, that's just prize money payout, that's not including infrastructure, lights, porta-potties, um, housing for our staff, our hotels for the people that are coming, like, that doesn't take into account those things as well. Again, like, I did a piss poor job, it sounds like, at outlining what would the needs were for the actual event, but I just thought, well, if this is what I'm using it for, and so I do apologize for that, that sounds like there was a mix-up on my end.
Yeah, I think just like, uh, a little more detailed budget, um, I think that just would have, obviously, there's only a certain amount of boxes, I think, you know, you don't need your whole entire budget of every single thing line itemed, I think we're just, yeah, like what Sharon's always a little confused, um, with those two columns, so, um.
Yeah, it's, it's missing half a picture here.
Yeah. And then so, you know, Jacob, what do you think about what Mary mentioned, you know, like, if you were to be, um, the green, like, at eighteen three, if we appropriate that, how do you feel about that amount, or is there another amount, Mary, that you were thinking? Or just once you hit what the grant was given, if you make any more profit, that comes back?
Yes, I think profit above, uh, the, what's given. Or maybe even be, uh, uh, it's hard for me to come up with where it would be, just not knowing, but I'm just like, uh, if there was a, and I hope you make this kind of money, that would be so exciting, and make it real easy for you to come back the following year, because last year when we were there, everybody talked about this is the first annual, and I want that to be true, that every year we have a Powaw. And just, uh, so at a certain point of you're making money, then you pay a portion of, you pay a portion of the grant back.
Is that for this year, or is that for continuous years, so I, I would need to know, like, I'm assuming it would be eighteen thousand three hundred dollars this year. If we made anything more than that, we would agree to pay some of the money back.
No, I think you should make some money, don't you, I think you should make some money, I don't want you to break even. I want there to be a certain amount of money made. Uh, so at a certain, and I don't know, I need some help here, uh, so at a certain amount, maybe when you make eight that much money, when you make the amount of money that we've given you, then perhaps you, we could have a percentage of the profits beyond that paid back to the county, and, but no more than what we gave you. Ben, am I making any sense? I want to make sure, so.
I'm definitely the last person to ask, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
How to get Lacy in here?
When we, uh, so when, so when you start, you're, you know, we, you need to make some profit, so maybe when you make the profit to what we've given you, then the profit beyond what we've given you, perhaps you pay half of that back until you reach what we've given you, and then you, once you reach what you, we've given you, then you keep it all.
Anything in excess?
Um, yes, so, so they make this much money, so they make, what was it, I have it up here. So you make eighteen, uh, what was it, eighteen thousand, is that what you're asking for?
Three hundred.
Yeah.
We're asking for eighteen thousand three hundred.
Okay, you get, once you get to eighteen thousand three hundred, and you've made that money, Jason, you're a businessman, so I'm really asking you. Okay, so when you make that much money, then all money above that, say then you make another eighteen thousand three hundred, you give the county half of that, and then you give half of your profits until you reach eighteen thousand three hundred, so you're still making a lot of money, you're making over eighteen thousand, and hopefully you can double that and make up forty-one, but out of that forty-one, at a certain point, I do think it would be appropriate to, uh, pay back the grant.
So, Mary.
Are you making sense, Jacob?
Yeah, yeah, you are, my, my only question is, is, I, uh, two questions. When we, when we put out the, um, the RFP or whatever it is for people to come up with events for the fall, I thought our total budget, um, of leftover was eighteen thousand three hundred, and, um, and so that was the total budget that we had for fall events. And so I don't know if, um, Ben or, or, um, or someone there can, can say, like, we approved a bunch of events, so I don't know that eighteen three is even available at this point because of what was, um, already allocated to previous, um, events that were coming up. Second, on that, I don't know that we've ever approved an event and asked them, then, then I'm not saying it can't be done, but ask them to pay back or ask them to put back in, I, and I don't know, and, but I, but I'm thinking that we probably, um, haven't. Um, you know, because it, now we're, now we're like. It's like a loan, you know, stuff like that, stuff.
Yeah, it's getting a little too confusing, maybe, uh, proof, prove the grant.
We don't have eighteen three left.
Yeah, I don't think we have.
We just have fifteen three left? Exactly. I can answer that.
Yes, okay, uh, Ra- Rachel can comment on some finances and then, and then Sharon had something to add to Jason's remarks and then Mary, Rachel.
So we technically have a different pot of money that we were gonna use for the community event grant, that August has said that since this would qualify as a community event grant, that we may be able to take the money out of that, and we currently have more than eighteen thousand three hundred dollars available in that pot money.
It could be a.
Well, technically.
No, I'm just saying, if it's coming out of that, we don't have to vote on it.
Yes, you do, you, you would vote on it because you are the judge of proof of this grant.
We're not the community.
And we don't have it on here. No, it's, it's in the, in the law of the image of past, T cap is designated as.
We just haven't run it forward yet. We just designate.
This is a temporary end of program, we haven't actually.
Okay. We'd have to add it on the next meeting. So what I was gonna say along with what Jason was saying is, I, if we start doing where if they make a certain amount and they have to pay, we're gonna have to revamp the whole grant program, because that's not how our grant program is set up. Um, and I'm not, I'm, I don't.
Let's not do that, let's not do that.
Yeah, I don't want to redo everything with the grant program. And I, I want people to make profit, I mean, let's not, if they have a great year, awesome. Um, and then our, our, that's what is, our grant is for, is to get them self-sufficient. So.
I wasn't.
You know, I, I'm saying if to show that the expenses are gonna be higher, I'm a.
Yeah, I personally want to see all that reworked so we can make like a more educated appropriation for this, so we look back at it. It looks like how you just described it, that'd be great, and then I'm kind of with Sharon, going forward, um, just grants aren't written out like that, so the money, I hope the event's successful and I hope to come back next year.
Well, our, our goal would be that they not come back next year.
Exactly. No, they come back to Moab.
Yeah, but, but the goal, but the goal is that, like, hey, we're gonna give you, you know, and this isn't a slam on you, Jacob, um, but it's like saying that we're, we're putting trust in you because we're saying, hey, we'll give you this eighteen three, you're gonna make forty-five thousand dollars, um, next year, you're gonna take the eighteen three that you need in expenses, you're gonna put that in a bank account so that you don't have to come to the Travel Council and borrow money next year, or, or, or apply for this grant, you, you guys, because the whole point of this thing is, is to come and get you to become self-sufficient. because the whole point of this thing is to come and get you to become self-sufficient and get these events to get on their feet. So they come back every year, you know, with a positive cash flow, you know, for you guys and the community.
By a lump in the back.
So I, I'm looking, I'm really looking forward to this event.
Yeah, and I think it's a great event, you know, so, so. So I, I would make a motion that we, are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I think we are.
Okay.
I think what I was just gonna suggest is that, so in this form, I'm assuming that, it's my first time looking at the form, and I'm assuming Jacob that you built up this form and these, like, under the expense categories, you just wrote down like what the grant would be for. But all of your other expenses technically are not on that form. So I'm guessing that I think what should be maybe just for everybody, for clarity for everybody else, yeah, on that form. And just under your expenses, you can just say like whatever the 18,3 said, you know, up to 27,000. So just put the rest of those numbers in there. So the total of the expenses is 27,000 and then your requested amount is only gonna be 18,3. And I think that's most of it.
And if I, if I could add, Mary is the professional on Robert's rules, but we can, we can have an emotion, we can have a motion, go through pending changes provided by, by Jacob or revisions to the document. That's all because this is the designated meeting time we have to do this. So we can do that.
Yes. So pending or revised expenses?
Yes.
And I think the only page you need to redo is just the budget page. You don't need to redo.
Pending revised.
Budget breakdown. Okay, do you want me to make that one? Okay, I would like to make a motion that we approve the grant for the Indigenous Health and Wellness Connections Powaw for 18,300 on the provision that a new budget breakdown page is submitted showing the actual budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alex, second.
And just a quick thing for discussion purposes, Jacob, if it's possible, we can get this into commission next week. The deadline for that is tomorrow at 5:00 PM. So would you mind getting me this revised budget before tomorrow at like 3?
I will do it tonight. I'm in St. Paul, Minnesota right now, attending a climate for change conference right now, but probably by tomorrow morning, I can get something to you. I'm just gonna contact my finance team and just to make sure that we have our infrastructure costs and our prize money payout and then from you folks. Again, that's my fault. I'm really, really happy that we're having this discussion. I, I, I'm very happy and look forward to having you folks out to the Powaw and, you know, making sure that you're listed as a proud sponsor and supporter of the Powaw. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Is there any other addition to the discussion?
No, I don't think so.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probably a roll call vote since it's on Zoom.
So you gotta call everyone out by name and ask how they feel.
All right. Jason Taylor?
Aye, yes.
Mary McGann?
She doesn't vote.
She doesn't vote.
Oh, okay. She's frozen too.
Sharon?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
I see them, honestly.
Fantastic. So yeah, thank you, Jacob, for taking the time and, along with Ben. And I believe that's all we have for discussion action items today. There's no other discussion or objections. I can discuss this meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you also. Appreciate you, Jacob. Good job.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
See you soon, Mary.